Colleen's now? Do Ryan get him out of here? I think that means she likes you. She wants to move you to the top of the list. Yeah, get him out of here.
This is, we got selected, I mentioned that the other day, we got selected for that other bridge.
Yes, sir.
This is up off of Superior Road, they refer to it as Fisher Bridge.
Okay.
Bridge sixty-one. We got selected by the state to fund this project. So I just brought in a quick agreement, we signed by the commissioners.
Okay.
We took flat. That's called our agreement with the bridge. Can you forward?
Is this something, do I need to have, does Josh need to look at this?
Um, he has in the past, he has looked at them in the past, um, but they're pretty standard.
Standard. Okay.
And that shows. That is what it would cost.
That's the wood of? Okay.
So the state's gonna pick up, I do believe it's eighty, twenty.
That's, that's the kind of stuff we like to hear.
That's the contract that says we select and pursue, do the plans and everything for the bridge so we can get the project.
Select and cook and, um, flat struggle.
What bridge do you want to run?
Uh, Fisher Bridge, uh, you know where Superior Road is, Les?
Yeah.
It is that little bridge on Fisher Road that you go back to in the south?
Yeah.
Off Superior, um, it's that bridge right there.
Gotcha.
Just a little bit off one hundred and eighty-nine street. So that, that will put that bridge to something that's actually usable for the people in the area. And, uh, like you say, it's a, we do believe it's an eighty, twenty split on this.
Okay, what, what Ryan brought is a, uh, is a contract agreement between us and the, the engineering firm. And it has, uh, spots for us to sign on that, and so he was, he would be interested in us getting to sign that. Is it okay if I just sign it?
Uh, yeah. Do the engineering firm on that one, Ryan?
Yeah.
Click the button, yeah.
I read through the agreement, it's just talking about, uh, you know, they're agreeing to, to, the agreement is for them to do the design work and then that the property would be ours afterwards. You have any further questions?
That bridge is the engineering firm.
Yes. Yes, and this was one of the ones that we had on our grant, so we took this bridge back off the grant, um, that we filled out. So I got with Rainy and Colleen and we, we had this bridge removed from that total fund. But we have still quite a few bridges that are on that grant fund that you've submitted.
With, yeah, within the bridge, within the bridge bond that you've got set up?
This will be.
Above that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so if you don't have any further questions on that, Les, or whatever, I just need, uh, a motion to sign that.
Show no.
Second, all in favor? Aye. All right, I'm gonna sign it. I don't know how you're gonna get Les to sign it, but.
We have our way.
Okay.
Again with Michelle.
There's that, I'll put that on top for you there.
And, um, I have a place on here where Michelle has to sign it.
Yeah. Did you, you needed all this to, to go with it?
Um, no. No, that don't make good.
Oh, that's just the. The fact sheet for.
Uh, this one is, um, hasn't been designed, so it is in very early stages. Uh, I think the funding, it, it goes quicker to the end of twenty twenty-seven.
Gotcha.
So we have some, uh, timeframe where they can get together, uh, once we get this back to him and they can move forward with the design plans. The most recent bridge that we have is over by the transfer station of two hundred and thirteenth and, uh, I think we're waiting for one more signature on that and we should be able to let it here in another month.
Okay.
Um, that bridge over by Burlingame, um, that's the one that you guys wanted to, uh, wait until after the first of the year so you had the money to move the power poles, right?
That's it.
Okay.
Anything else for us?
No, that was it.
Well, that was easy. You had me psyched out there for a little bit.
It wasn't bad.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Do we wanna do, uh, the Noctisweed to get the purchase order out here real quick? Mr. Colley? Since we're in the business of picking favorites here.
Got that, I could get some more escort, been a hot item this last month. I bought a pallet first of August and that's gone. So I'm gonna.
Wow.
A lot of people spraying your expedies right now. Escort, for what I recommend.
Yeah.
Hot item. Your expedies has been really healthy this year. I've seen some bigger plans I haven't seen before and I've seen it where I've never seen it before.
Really? Now, now, what's a quick history on that? Wasn't that brought in by some people that meant to do well?
Yes. Yeah. The federal government had a hand in that, some of the seed was brought into the CRP. Seed, and that's how basically that started.
Yeah.
Like Missouri, they just let it go. Brought in for erosion control.
Right.
And bird food.
Yeah. Yeah. Not that I'm pointing the fingers at, at the big government or anything, but for the record, yeah, we didn't, we didn't do it, so. All right, so this is just a purchase order in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents, uh, for the purchase of those chemicals, uh, to be paid from, was that Fund one thirty-seven?
I move to for this first store, Rob, or by Miss Colley?
And I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. It's number four, one, one, one. Anything else, Mr. Colley?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I did have a request about having some commissioners, uh, sit on a dump tank at our fall festival. Do you know when we'd be interested in?
Are you serious or you just pulling legs right now? I can't tell with you sometimes.
Kinda serious.
Kind, kinda serious, huh?
I think all three of them are shit.
Maybe if you have a lot more information, then I'll give it to you.
I don't know offhand if I have anything else to do, so you may, we may have to talk later. Appreciate the opportunity though, Mr. Colley, I really do, that's, I really like how you called it out in an open meeting too. Well played, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good one. I'll talk to you later. Les, you still got the swimming trunks, don't you?
I did.
I think the water be. Water be pretty warm this time of year.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, what do we wanna go to next on this? Do we want to, uh, do the economic development or? It's on the list next? Or do we, you wanna do, take care of that?
Yeah.
All right. Tricia Webb, and this is CUP. Okay. Conditional use permit.
So we have a conditional use permit from McDowell's to place a non-conditional structure to be used as a residence on their property.
And they are in attendance, Les, if you have, uh, if you didn't know.
Uh, I didn't really catch what she said very well, I actually can have her repeat that.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I have it, Mr. and Mrs. McDowell for placement or establishment of a non-traditional structure for residents. So if they have a container home that they would like to use on the property, um, they currently, Mr. McDowell is an architectural engineer in Kansas City, he's a part owner of the ENIM. And the existing house that is on the parcel is one of many wards. And he would like to place this structure on the same property.
Aye, and I assume since you're bringing it to us, they meet the criteria in our county in funding profit?
Yes, it has been, it was sent unanimously from the planning and zoning board to approve. The conditions that are placed upon it is that the current residential unit will become the primary residence with the non-traditional structure will be accessory dwelling unit. Um, and they are cleaning up their lagoon. The non-traditional structure will connect to the existing lagoon and in the event that they use the non-traditional structure, um, as an Airbnb or rented out, that it will apply for its O nine one one kindness.
Very good. Well, I will move to approve the conditional use permit presented by Tricia Webb.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This what we need to sign? All right, so we need to sign this resolution number Z twenty-five zero four. I signed it, left plenty of room for you to sign, Les.
Very good, yeah.
Can, can we use your stamp for the signatures?
Thank you, guys.
Make them a copy?
Yes, I will, we're back, Michelle, to you by stamp, party, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for joining us. Okay. Colleen, do we wanna do yours now? Okay.
Thank you.
Do you go for a copy of your, if you have a program discussion at first? Or do you want us to, like, next time? I like, okay, I think that's a plan. Okay, you can work out. That fine in the form, okay. Okay, you have any, go ahead, are we?
Oh, no.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Les, we're fighting to see who got to go next.
Well, um. Actually, the conversation's over, Rob, so we just wanna. So, Commissioner Smith and Chairman Holman.
Can you, hold on a second, let me move you closer here, Les.
Yeah. Thank you. Are you able to hear me, Les?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, we are here to discuss the two thousand and twenty-five Osage County, um, countywide MIH application. I'm joined today by, uh, with Joseph Thomas, uh, from Heartland Design and Build, who has been building and investing in Osage County for a couple of years now, right? They've been working on, on, uh, different projects. Um, today, uh, there are three, three things we'd like to touch on, just an update on the application. I've asked Joseph to just give a very quick overview of the history of this, mostly, um, for your sake, Commissioner Smith, so that we can bring you up to speed.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and then, uh, second of all, we have for the new application, we have two resolutions that we will need your approval on and signatures by Chairman Holman. And then there is an impact to the application by the NRP program, the county NRP program. So we, um, invite, uh, Land Development Director Tricia Webb and Michelle Brooks from the Appraisals Office and one more, sorry, one, Savannah here to join us to provide input as well. So with that, I'll turn it over, uh, to Joseph.
Thanks for having me here today and just, I guess, just review overall the MIH program, I don't know how familiar you are with it, but. So it's the moderate income housing program through the, uh, Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, which is a non-for-profit entity that's tied to the state government but not part of the state government. Their issued funds, um, allocated from the state legislature, they, they're in charge of distributing all funds for the moderate income housing and also like a much bigger program, lots of people probably heard of this, a low income housing tax credits, um, that are, you know, federal and the state program. And so the moderate income housing program is designed to target kinda the missing middle, uh, um, in, in housing, kinda, if you wanna say, more starter level homes. You know, not, not, not high-end homes and not low-income housing, you know, uh, it's designed for the, to target people that don't receive any other federal subsidy. You know, they're too much to.
Right.
Qualify for any other federal subsidy. So for instance, like a family of four in Osage County, to qualify would have to earn, I think, for this year, it's a minimum of fifty-two thousand and a maximum of a hundred and twenty thousand, so it's a pretty broad range, but it's a lot of people that are in, you know, our local communities and kind of the, you know, like to think of.
Sure.
The backbone of the community, so.
Teachers, our neighbors, firefighters, this type of.
Yeah, and so it's meant to encourage housing for that population, uh, both owner-occupant housing and, uh, rental housing. And so previously with the, there've been two awards at the county level, one is at Carbonell for, I think, forty units that we're not a part of. That's another builder developer and those are all owner-occupant homes, I think, from what I understand.
Same program, though.
Same program, yeah. And then, and then we were awarded a, an award with Osage City, just the city, um, for six owner-occupant homes and nine rentals. And we're in the process of that right now, so we have four going and then we're working through the process with the city for, uh, replating a couple, uh, lots in order to get in the.
Make it happen.
Need to make it happen, yep. And then, and then we roll forward and trying to work through an application at the county level, which would, uh, capture every remaining municipality, incorporated municipality in the county. And so that would be, uh, Overbrook, Scranton, Burlingame, Linden, uh, Melbourne, and Quinumout. And then we're trying to distribute those units proportionate to population and, and so, like, lack. So we, we submitted one application in November of twenty twenty-four, found out that we weren't awarded that in March of twenty twenty-five. And then this is the next round for the MIH and this will be the last round at least for the next two years because the program wasn't re-upped or refunded, uh, by the legislature this year. So this will be probably the last chance we get to go for at least two years on an Osage County application. And, uh, yeah, so we're just trying to work through that, we've done, in, in part of the application, we have to get a resolution from the governing body for the municipality, which is the county in this case.
Showing support for the program, yeah. I got you.
One differentiator is that we are multi-chemistational, that is the one thing that keeps our application very high. After we talked to the Kansas Housing Resource Group, they briefly were encouraging, said we had a very strong application. And so, uh, this round, this is a re, a second go at it, there's no cost to the county, there's no cost to the communities to rescind it, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and then a piece that we, I know the, the county put the neighborhood revitalization program on hold, uh, in June. And so then, yeah, one affects what we're doing in Osage City for the award we already given, you know, I certainly speak in strong encouragement of continuing it 'cause I can tell you on the, on the owner-occupant side, it makes a big difference, you know, people, it, it's, it's been a big factor in whether people wanna move forward trying to build a new home, you know, they're downsizing, changing home type. A lot of it has to do with accessibility, doing the same all on one level, um, but it's definitely been a big factor in people wanting to move forward even to get those units done, 'cause for the, like, the owner-occupant units in Osage City, I mean, we'll, we'll build those on lots that have been, that were developed. The plat was recorded in nineteen ninety-two, so those lots have been sitting there ready, built, ready for thirty years and, you know, it's really been the MIH funds and then also the NRP that's making it so that we can get those built out. So, and then, and then on the rental side, the NRP having that, the property tax abatement for the first few years or the first several years when you're, you know, and when we're renting those, that's really what makes the projects viable, so that we can keep the rent at an affordable level. You know, for instance, roughly like the, the county, uh, portion of the NRP on a, if, if we, if our original basis in a lot, we'll say twenty thousand and we put two hundred thousand dollars of improvements in there, so we have a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar house. The county, it's just, uh, a little, right around a hundred dollar a month is what the tax savings are on the county portion of that. And, and, but there's, you know, while the, while the county is, you know, there is some lost opportunity costs in the tax revenue there.
Any increased expense on whoever lives there and you have to pay for the roads and all that?
Yeah, yeah, and, and tax on everything, but it, it does bring or keep residents in the community. You know, and we are, we do spend a, a ton of money locally having that built, so there's tremendous economic impact. You know, like the, the, the prop, or just the sales tax, you know, that we'll pay on materials that are bought locally and then almost a, a vast majority of the subs that we're using are all local people.
Yeah.
And so, you know, all that money, uh, you know, that's being, uh, you know, created or, you know, all that economic, economic impact that's being created, you know.
Yeah.
That all, that all plays into whether those happen, like, um, I was sharing earlier today, like, with the NRP, if, on the rental side, you know, like, it, it really makes the projects not viable to do and I know rental inventory is.
Yeah.
Is, is a big need and a concern and unfortunately, I mean, it's.
Especially for the entry-level housing, you know what I mean? Which talking, exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's really unfortunate that where things are and there, there's nothing, you know, I can't change it. You know, try to look and say, how do we a, address it and what's the means to make that happen? And, and the good thing is on the county level, you know, once those roll out in NRP and obviously, you know, we should be, the county should be collecting sale of property taxes on.
Well, like I said, there's ac, uh, economic activity involved outside of just strictly property taxes. That is a benefit to.
Yeah.
Local communities and.
Yeah. And then like if, if we retain a family or that would move out of town otherwise or.
Yeah.
A new, a new family moves in and obviously you got that.
You have the house somewhere else.
You got that per people, uh, um, you know, allowance that's coming from the state to help the local schools. So that's another big benefit that, um, you know, has and then, and, and as housing stock and inventory rolls off, you know, homes that are a hundred plus years, as they become, you know, functionally obsolete and roll off and, you know, we've gotta somehow create an inventory and, and this is a big piece on making that happen, so. But yeah, so we're, back to why we're really here for the resolution is to work towards the Osage County application and resubmitting again this all on a play, uh, making that happen, so.
So can you explain on the new application, which by the way is due October third, um, how do the, how does the NRP calculations impact the application?
Yeah, so there's, there's several elements in application, like, so the application that was put in at, for Osage County, it was two hundred and thirty-six pages on the last round 'cause we have to show, um, a set of plans for every single house we're gonna build, we have to show a site plan. So it's, it's not, it's a very specific grant where it's, we're gonna build this house for this cost at this location and we have to show control of that lot, like.
All upfront, yeah.
All upfront, so there's a lot of, it's a, it's a very specific, it's not a, hey, we're gonna, we're submitting a grant for X number of dollars to build housing. You know, it's not a nebulous thing like that, it's a, we're gonna build this exact type of unit at this exact location. So a big piece of the application is, where are you building, what are you building, showing that there's a need for it? And then also they wanna see as the, um, municipality or jurisdictions applying for the, the award, they wanna see that that jurisdiction has skin in the game, basically. And so some cities or counties will do that by donating lots out of the land bank, reducing pe, or permit fees, you know, and a, a lot of, so the MIH is only eligible for counties with populations less than sixty thousand, and so a lot of those counties have NRP programs.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we calculate as part of the application, hey, the county is foregoing this amount of, you know, they're allowing a, a rebate for this amount of property.
Right, that's the skin, that's, that's, that's the contribution.
That's the contribution towards the project.
I got you.
So that's what we calculate. So, so it's important, even if it's not completely finalized, we'd really like to know what is the direction of the county commission so that we can calculate that and say, hey, the, the county, you know, the NRP program is currently paused, however, here's the draft of.
Yeah.
You know, that's what, what the county commission, the direction.
Sure, sure.
So we can calculate that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, the only thing I'd, might add to that somewhere, in a perfect ideal situation, you know, I've, I've been approached by business owners and stuff in the county before that really wished there was some way, uh, that these developments would be encouraged to buy from, in the county, buy supplies and materials and that, and I don't know what that looks like, I haven't been able to, you know, put that on paper anywhere, but if you ever have any ideas on that.
Yeah, I, I, I have actually, I've actually thought about that, 'cause, you know, how, how do you try to do that?
Yeah.
I don't know how you, you know, if you could make it that some percentage of construction costs has to be.
Right.
With businesses and or contractors within the county.
Right.
Um, you know, but then you get into, you know, who wants to be the person and who's gonna be the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That wants to audit that and then.
Yeah, I know some counties do like a blanket deal saying, uh, you know, if you're within whatever picker percentage, ten percent of whatever it would be from out of town or out of county, then you were to take the bid that was in the county because it was within that ten percent or things like that. Uh, like I said, I haven't put it on paper, I don't know how that works in real life, but I would really like if we would somehow incentivize or encourage, um, you know, bringing that, that money into the county and every stage that you can, you know.
Yeah, and that's, and that's really general.
Do you want to share in kind of how you're doing that with the Osage City project?
Yeah, so like with the Osage City project, like, just walking down, I mean, for me, one, 'cause I really value small communities, small towns, rural Kansas, uh, it, it's important for, you know, us, it's just my wife and I, to buy and support.
Yeah.
Local businesses. And so like we, we're getting all lumber from the lumberyard in, you know, Osage City and, uh, like the, the subcontractors that we're using, so the, the concrete is from Osage, is the concrete supplier from Osage City and the installer, um, the framing sub on three of the four houses is from Osage City. The, uh, electrician is from Osage City, the mechanical, uh, is barely outside of Osage County, but, uh, and the plumber on two of the houses is from Scranton, the other one, he is from Franklin County, but his superintendent lives in Linden, so he's really excited about the, the jobs in Osage City. The, you know, the gutters will be from Osage City, the.
Right.
Yeah, the land clearing, dirt, we're just.
Yeah.
You know, we're trying.
Yeah, and that's the stuff I like to hear, I love that, because, you know, everybody talks about getting this free money or trickle-down money from the, from the national government, it comes down, well, if, if it doesn't stay in the county, it doesn't actually do any, you know what I mean? It, I, I like keeping those dollars revolving around within the, within the county.
And there's definitely a point of differentiation for, for, and, for, and, design and build, sorry. I mean, bottom line is, that's one of the things that really differentiates Joseph and his heart for small rural communities. And by the way, he's like, is friends with half of Osage, so they all have been growing under.
We all hold that against.
Well, all of that is to say that we have two resolutions, uh, to have approved today and signed by the, uh, the chairman. And then, um, if we wanted to invite, uh, Tricia or Michelle, if they have any updates on the NRP program or if there's more discussion. or if there's more discussion, that we need now? If you were on.
Uh, so if I may, I would think we need to have a further discussion. I understand that it's due October third, but I know that Tricia and Michelle are in the process of fine tuning the NRP moving forward. And I don't really know what direction I'm going yet. I have my ideas, but, um, I think we at least need to have more information on that NRP before we get confident or I can confidently, uh, approve the resolution. I do think the MIH is a, a good thing, um, but the one question that I do have in regards to all that, I kind of understand everything worked. You know, you're under the authority of the zoning district, you know, the newer section code and whatnot, but, uh, I know we have the issues with some of the bills in the past. And I'm just curious, who is responsible for holding these guys to the building standard? Uh, I know in some instances, we've had houses that were not sheeted clearly before house wrap was applied. And, uh, to me, if we're going to spend government dollars, we need to build quality. And I'm not saying that they're not building it improperly or, you know, like a bad home, but to me, having sheeting on exterior of your house before you put your house wrap adds a whole other level, uh, to that quality. So if we have that most addressed, have that course in the path, uh, where are we adding that?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to share, I mean, uh, that's been shared through the grapevine for me on like what's happened at some other locations. And, I mean, uh, first of all, I guess I should say I'm a licensed building structural engineer, so I know a lot about this. Um, the, what's a, a common practice and, you know, we've done on lots of houses and you can go and see five hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar houses that this is the standard practice where you, you put the studs, you put the house wrap, and then the vertical group siding, the, the T one eleven, some people refer it to. I mean, tho- the, those all are, uh, sheer panels. So they're designed to take lateral resistance and don't need a substrate of OSB below them to act as your sheer panel. Um, now I can tell you, we've decided, because I've heard from, of the concern from so many people, that we've decided that the house we're doing, even though it's not typically for what we do, we've just decided that it's not worth the, you know, bad, the bad blood and the suspicion and the concern, the concern to not put the OSB sheeting up, so we're just doing that on our projects. Um, but, but, but structurally, I mean, it definitely, not having the OSB sheetings, as long as you're nailing the vertical group siding, the LP product, um, per their manufacturer.
Manufacturer standards, yeah.
Yeah, then you, you definitely have plenty of, especially on a single one-story project, you're going to have multiple times the sheer, uh, value that's required. So I know that's a conception that I've heard from a lot of people about the concern. Um, but, but yeah, we're, we're, we're putting the OSB sheeting on all of our projects in OSH City and we plan to do it in OSH County just to take care of that concern because it has been, I've heard it from probably twenty different people at least. Um, so, you know, we're not, that's, it's not worth it to me to, to have that issue. Uh, but, but in, in, on the government, um, finance piece, I, I do want to make sure also like the, the MIH money, it's a block of like this round is five point something million dollars. It'll probably be distributed amongst, let's say, twenty-ish probably, uh, uh, projects across the state. That money will be going somewhere.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, it's all been taken out of all of our state income taxes, well, and state property taxes, uh, and so it's state sales tax. So it's just a matter of, are, is any of it going to come here?
Yeah, it'd be nice to get a tax return here.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and then, and then there's a, there's a bunch of other, a- as part of the application, like we have to provide, I, I would say, above standards and above what you would typically think of builder grade, um, uh, components like the HVAC system. We have to do a higher level of, a higher C rating, a higher, um, uh, rating on the heat pumps or the furnace. We have to do a higher level of insulation, a higher level of U-values on the windows. Um, so there's, it, it's by default, it's, uh, a little bit better than what I would say is standard and what's typical for, you know, an entry level home, so.
Les, just, just that.
Well, I, I do, I do appreciate your, uh, structural expertise and my reference to the sheeting isn't just about structural because I understand that's a banal or structural in nature, um, I understand that, but, you know, that sheeting also acts as a factor for when you're, uh, flashing windows and penetration and things of that nature. So that was one of my concerns because that's what we rated to have, uh, and I see in position that part of the issue with moisture getting inside the house, uh, and actually no, uh, wa- flowing, so that was just penetration not being done correctly. And, uh, that's why I kind of ask who's responsible, you know, if, I know the city is also responsible for building inspector, like if you're working in OSH City, but if some of these other cities where you don't have to go back and, and building inspector necessarily, does the government require you guys to have some sort of inspector as part of the program?
Uh, I, I'm honestly not familiar with how like, let's say, let's take one of the smaller municipalities like Quinamo or Melbourne. I, I don't know the county's working, like if the county has a building inspector, I mean, I know you have a building code, I think you're still under like the two thousand nine or twelve IBC or IRC, but.
But this program is like two thousand and eighteen, huh?
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, I think yours has to be built to the IRC. But as far as who's actually coming to check, I, I don't really know, I mean, obviously, I, I'm not incentivized to cut any corner because, you know, if something happens, then I'm on the hook to fix it later.
Right.
So, you know, for me, there's no incentive to cut corner, but I know, one, people can choose to cut corners, and two, people can inadvertently cut corners. And it's really not, I mean, it isn't, I, I like all the building inspectors that I work with because, you know, invariably, they're going to catch something that I don't.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I, I value that relationship a lot, but I don't know who that party is at the county level, like if, if somebody, especially for the smaller municipalities.
Yeah, the county head.
Well, I know, right, I know who it is at the county level.
Okay.
I was just asking if the state required some sort of inspection, you know, it'll be a third party or whatever the issue is or. Um, and I'm not trying to call you out or anybody out, I'm in, I've been in the building for thirty years and I know how it's worked. And sometimes they have to pick that corner, get cut in it early and things like that. Um, I'm just curious, you know, to say, I'd like somebody that was watching out for the interest as well.
Yeah.
There's a question that we've been asked prior to because we did run into some of the cities, there's, I mean, uh, other areas that people build in, they don't have building to our building inspector, so they default to the county. Well, we don't have no stuff in our OBs or so, I'm just kind of curious what, if that's an address moving forward, is even if it's an issue.
Yeah, to probably directly answer your question, the state, there's one construction inspector for KHRC, uh, but, I mean, uh, he comes once, maybe twice during the construction proj- because he's going across the whole state and all, not just MIH project, he's also doing on LHITC projects, which are even, you know, a lot bigger and more involved and more numerous, so, you know, he's stretched in, um, and, yeah, so, yeah, he comes one, one to two, like I've seen, he's come to our projects, I think, three times and the times that we've been building between Ottawa and OSH City, so he's just more coming to just generally check, trying to catch things. And he's, he's not certainly going to go around and check, for instance, like that all the trust screws are on, you know, he's not doing a framing inspection or a roughing inspection or anything that the building inspector would be, you know, significantly thorough. He's looking for global things just to make sure that we're generally conforming with the requirements of, of MIH for, like, the type of window and insulation and things like that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So then we have two weeks between now and when the application is due, so we'll come back then in two weeks and have further to. Next week, okay, great, um, Tricia suggested next week, so we'll, we'll be going to do that.
Okay, yeah, we don't want to push you right up against the boundary, I just want to make sure that Tricia and Michelle have time, maybe you can provide what enter it and feel comfortable with, so we can move forward.
Yeah, and again, uh, Les, we just need directional, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent finalized, but just directional for the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, because like on the rental units, you know, like I explained, we're going to use the NRP, uh, you know, to calculate what the rent is. And, you know, we'd just like to be ac- you know, accurate for that or close to accurate.
Right, close, yeah.
So that's all.
Well, we, yeah, we should be able to have you in pretty good direction on, on most of that here, real quick, I think, I mean, the gals have been working hard on it, so.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Well, Les, I do, I do want to remind you that that meeting, you have the twenty-third, and it is six P M E.
It is, oh, thank you so much. And, um, Michelle, should we give this to you for resolution numbers for future or just worry about it that day?
Um, probably that day.
That day, okay, gotcha.
You say you had two of those to sign, is that correct, Colleen, on the?
Two, yes, uh-huh, yes.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Colleen.
You got it, so thank you, Les.
Yeah, we're getting down. What's up?
Uh, can I ask for a brief recess?
What?
Sh- sure.
Are you going to play?
Five minutes.
I have some, uh, appearance of state that must be represented in our affairs.
Okay, we'll recess the, uh, uh, the board meeting for five minutes.
Thank you, I'm here.
All right. All right, I'm going to set you over here closer to the gal so that you can hear them.
Okay.
Are we ready, ready? We're good, okay, back in session.
All right, so we went through, we've looked at other counties and how they are handling their NRP. Um, so some of the things that we have is one application per property. So that way you don't have a parcel that is in the NRP perpetually, um, and it will make it a lot more simple. Instead of, okay, this building's getting this rebate, this building's getting this rebate and so forth.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Um, so other counties have done that they can get no other tax incentives, grants, and that they waive the right to protest taxes. So considering that the MIH needs this in order to make their rentals viable, we are suggesting just doing the waive the rights to protest taxes. Um, then we have other counties that do not transfer to a new owner. So it does not stay with the property, it stays with whoever, yeah, the owner, the original owner. Um, I would suggest one transfer instead of.
Trying to track it through.
Yes, you know, um, and then all counties and statutorily, no delinquent taxes. Now, some counties have it to where they can't be delinquent in December, others just say the May. Um, and then we also have counties that they can't be delinquent on utility payments or to the state of Kansas. Now, to me, that would be a lot to track. Uh-huh, but if we just stick with the taxes.
Now, if, on that, would it clear, kick them out of the program or would it just be something where they didn't receive it for that?
It kicks them out.
Kick them out, so you don't have to track it, I'm, that's what I'm saying, you don't want to be, well, this year you paid, so we have to rebate you, and this year you didn't, so we don't rebate you.
Exactly.
And just a deadline, I mean, if you did, well, I would say May.
Yeah.
Because we have the end of May, we have plenty of May, because usually we have a grace period anyway for taxes in May, just because.
Well, but for the NRP, we, they need to be by May term, so that way we can do our paperwork to have everything done in time that the treasurer does her distribution in June. Um, then, uh.
And it would make sense for them to be able to pay the whole thing because they wouldn't be able to protest anyway, right?
Yes, and the majority of them, at least on new builds, their escrow is paying it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It, it's more of a, um, a we have one, the. So it, it's more of a, um, we have one, then maybe their escrow's not paying. Um, and then we're suggesting going either five to seven years instead of the full ten years. And then doing either a ninety to eighty percent with the county retaining five to ten percent of the rebate. Because right now we have that the county keeps twenty-five dollars from each rebate.
The permit fee or whatever, pretty much.
Well, no, that's the application fee. This is like the yearly admin fees.
Okay.
Well, we had C I C come in and there's no way to do like the twenty-five dollars per. So now the treasurer has to go in and manually remove. Mm-hmm. And so when you look at every other county, they're doing a five to ten percent is what they're retaining from the rebate.
So it's more of an automated process that way?
Yeah.
And I think we can set it up that way, to be, as a percentage on there, so it would make everything streamlined, you could pretend it's not created.
And so that retainer, that would end up being your admin fee?
Yes.
For, for handling it, for tracking it all out.
Yeah. And then, um, we're also suggesting to cap it at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you're building a new house for over three hundred and fifty, and that's just the house, not purchasing the land. But this way is, this program's intended for middle income people. Not, and so Atchison County, they have suspended the county participation based on the fact of people coming in and building million dollar homes. And.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, and so they, Atchison County's also had this for over twenty years, and they hired a financial manager to see what the actual benefit to the county was. And they're, it, it's costing them.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I could see that, cause your.
Mm-hmm.
Your costs go up immediately and then.
Yeah.
You don't get your backend for ten years down the road or whatever.
Yeah. So, how is it?
Huh. So, uh, one of the deals you had mentioned, what was, uh, earlier on, one of the first things, um.
One application per property?
No, after that one.
Um, waive the rights to protest taxes.
After that one.
Um, transfer?
Yeah, so the transfer deal. Uh, so you were suggesting one transfer for property?
Yes.
What's the risk, what's the problem of more, more than one transfer? Is it just tracking it or is it?
It is. It gets to be a lot in tracking it. If you have, let's say you have a house, and so you've got a builder who comes in and applies, okay? And then you've got the new property owner, and then a year or two later, same thing.
Yeah.
And, and you just keep doing that.
Does it matter? When property sells typically it goes up. I mean, nobody, you don't wanna sell it for less than what you put into. So, does that affect?
It does.
The, the NRP when you?
Yeah, every time it sells and their taxes go up, they get more rebate.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
It's not just a standard, we, we do a two-twenty, like they were using the example of two-twenty, it doesn't stay up, cause it's always gonna go up.
Now, would the program start over for that property each time it sold, or there was a new, it would still be locked in, so whatever that timeframe is, ten year, five year, whatever, it wouldn't start over?
No.
With the property sold? Okay. But your percentage could change?
Yes.
The rebate percentage could change. Or dollar amount.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I'm a little slow, I'm just simple country folk, you know?
Please, you're on.
Yeah, I got that going for me.
And then also to put verbiage in that the application fee is non-refundable.
Right.
Cause that, that verbiage is.
Whether they're approved or not, or?
Exactly. Um, we are the only county that has a refundable application fee.
Yeah. Yeah, the fewer things we have to track, is, in my opinion, the better.
Yes.
Les, what do you think about the, uh, the, this so far? Anything of specific concern?
No, I agree with Tricia and Michelle. Uh, we know that the NRP, uh, in some way drives up the cost of those homes, and that's another issue, kinda like what we touched on last night.
Yeah.
Uh, and not that we don't want that, cause if it's, as a county, if we didn't think the way we thought, we would both be really non-valuated to skyrocket. More tax dollars. But being that we think the way we think, we want to balance that. And NRP can be a good thing, and like they're trying to put in here, it could turn into a bad thing quickly.
Yeah. Well, you, you end up being like Atchison County.
Right.
You know?
Right. So I think what they're doing is good. I think, uh, uh, obviously I'll probably call Tricia and have another conversation at the meeting here just to make sure. But yeah, I, I think we should step it back just a little bit, and kind of, you know, regulate the time and length and, and percentage. I really agree with the whole, uh, transfer one dime. Um, cause just like Tricia said, you know, a builder typically is gonna apply for this in a builder's sense, that they're building a house and sell. Uh, so then you're still covered for when they sell it to the next people, but you kind of limit the time it's taking to transfer to, to try and keep the valuation going exponentially. You know, the lending, cause that, that triples down to all the other property. So then, when you're doing a good thing, you're building all these houses, and then all these other, uh, similar property, compared to property, go up, I just follow.
Right.
Where, where doing a good and then a bad.
You're up, yeah, you got the couple, a couple houses down that's on a fixed income, but they haven't done anything to their house, but then their taxes triple or whatever.
Right, right.
What about?
I think it's on the right track.
What about on the, uh, the, the, uh, another thing that'll be a hot topic I know will be, would be the term limits on that. Changing from like a five, seven, ten year, all that. Do you have any specific concerns on that, Les?
Uh, something that Tricia and I have talked, and I'm still kicking it back and forth, cause she's had very good, uh, points. Um, we definitely wanna make it beneficial, so like, I'm not totally against the ten year. Uh, I do think, part of me thinks that maybe we dial it back to seven, but I wouldn't wanna go less than seven. Uh, but I do like the percentages, so every year you go out and it decreases just a little.
Right.
To help offset that revenue. You know, we have tons of revenue covered in from other taxes and things like that, and I don't think we, we have any conversations, but, you know, we don't.
Right.
To me, just where I'm sitting right now, I think, yeah, we'll go less than seven, and then, you know, taking the percentages down, I think would help the county move it forward. You know, retain some more of those tax dollars throughout the years.
What would be an example of your tiered, tiered, if you did a seven year, what would be the tiers?
Well, so after talking with Joseph, the issue that they would have with the M I H on the tiered is with their application fee and keeping rent stable.
Ah, okay.
Because they're using this to lower the rent. So if we did seven years, we could do a ninety or eighty percent is what they would get back for the rebate. And then the county would retain either five or ten percent of the rebate for the admin fee. So instead of them getting a hundred percent back, they would get, you know, let's just say ninety percent, and then of the ninety percent, the county would retain ten percent.
Okay.
Is generally how, when you look at other counties that don't tier down.
Yeah.
So if we keep eighty percent, or if they get an eighty percent rebate, those counties will keep five percent of the rebate, because they're getting more than fine.
Right. Maybe this is a question for just, does a term length affect, affect, uh, the viability of projects, or?
Yeah.
Or is it mainly just the tiered, I mean, just the percentages?
Yeah, I mean, um, generally, how I like to describe it is, the NRP probably allows you to build new and then let kind of the inflationary pressures come unfortunately. On rent, like if rent went up just a little bit over the next five to seven years, then that gets you where you can, then cover that big jump up in property taxes. So you're still covering, you know, your loan expenses. Um, yeah, I mean, five or seven. Per- personally, I think keeping a flat, whatever you pick, I would personally like to see if, I, I just think it becomes convoluted from a citizen's standpoint.
To do the tiered?
To, to, if you do a tiered, it becomes convoluted versus just, here's at least an easy calculation, no matter where you're at on the timeline, this is the calculation of, of what it is.
Well, and that would be, you know, one less thing to track, so to speak, is?
Yeah, and then, and then as, as that property ages, then you're getting closer in value to existing construction. Right now, one of the big jumps we have is, there's a big disparity between existing inventory and then new buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a big gap.
Yeah, it's a big gap. And so then the NRP is what helps kind of bridge that gap, so that we can encourage and slash, you know, financially responsibly bring on new, doing new construction, new units into the market. So, yeah, and, and, and like, uh, me personally, I think having some portion that stays with the county, I think is a good, fine thing.
It's reasonable, right?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
I mean, that's what we're talking about. Joseph, about was the ninety percent, maybe to ten percent, um, for admin fees. You're getting a kickback for what counts. It's not.
Right.
Twenty-five dollars, which is fine, but it doesn't cover all of, I mean, even the treasurer having to keep that in is probably everything.
All right, yeah, yeah.
She will have more.
Yeah. Um.
And the other, other thing that we need to cover is probably that the improvement cost, not how we build, it's totally off of that subject, but we would be getting at least a twenty percent improvement.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I was totally on point, but since you're talking to her.
I gotcha. So this would be for, uh, uh.
For rehab.
Rehab projects or whatever, yeah. Renovations and what have you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty to twenty-five percent.
Yeah. And that's, because it's, at fifteen percent, it's easy to fall out of it in a year or two.
Yeah.
But at twenty to twenty-five percent, you know that you're going to stay in more than likely through the good timeframe of the project.
Regardless of what the, uh, inflationary pressures are around you for the property values. Now, is that's, then again, that, that is also just on structures, right? That's not on?
It's just on, like, just on the improvement. Yeah, the improvement. It doesn't count for a detached garage or, you know.
Somebody build a big shed or something?
Yeah.
Planting a bunch of fruit trees or something? And that, so on that, would you be considering that to be a, a different timeframe also? Moving that to like a?
We would put that with the.
The same specs?
Yes, same specs. It would just be, um, for rehabs, they have to have twenty or twenty-five percent.
Okay. And that would still be one transfer after that, if you were in it?
Yeah. So, yeah.
Same things, you gotta maintain your property taxes, you gotta?
Yeah, and so it's like, okay, if, you know, let's say I'm getting ready to build and I decide that I wanna put a new deck on my house, now that would count, because it's on the house.
Right.
Right? But if it's, I'm gonna build a new garage beforehand, or, um, I'm going in and let's say, new kitchen remodel, okay? To sell the house or whatever, um, then that would be the one transfer, so I would apply for it.
So the new buyer would get to have?
The new buyer would get the benefit of it, yes.
So that would be another incentive to, to, yeah, that's not.
Well, then, the seller's really, really, you're not losing that incentive.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's all, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where are we at on, have you guys had any brainstorms on as far as like the brochures, the packets or whatever to be passing out to folks?
Well, and so I do have a thing from, that I basically, um, stole from Pawnee County.
Liberated. Liberated.
And, um, it is a statement that you understand that you have to have your taxes current, that you can't be delinquent in your taxes for, um, in order to stay in the program.
Just a succinct version of?
Yes, and then.
Thou shall?
I made up some other forms, um, but I didn't wanna spend too much more time.
Right.
Until I knew.
What the parameters were?
Yeah.
I mean, you guys are, I think we've talked about before, but you're guys are both kind of on board with that idea that it'd be nice to have, it's like, hello, Mister Jones, here's what, we appreciate your application for this, here's what you must do, yeah.
And I think that's what all these, you know, ones, which we should call into, so she knows, but, um.
Also something that we could.
To the point, too.
Yeah, cause communication, yeah, communication was, going through that list of, you know, a lot of that, I think, is communication. So if we were able to hand this out to folks, uh, you know, developers or realtors, whoever would be able to have a copy and look at it and say, oh, yeah, this is what, you know. So we're all saying the same thing, yeah.
I think it's much as for commercial residential, and so it all would be.
And that was, yeah, yeah, on the commercial, originally I was thinking to do like a separate, you know, so they would have longer. But as we look, the majority of commercial, you know, even the New Dollar General, you know, they would be out, because they're above the four hundred thousand. Okay? Then, um, you know, when they come in to do a building permit, they already have everything lined up. They're ready to go. So they're going to be done in a year. It's the ones that are applying for the grants, that, you know, historical building.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, if they wanted to apply when they're close and they're finishing things up, but when, that's where the whole grant thing from the other ones, you know, their tax incentives or grants. You know, they're getting so much money for those.
Yeah.
That.
It's not that we wanna pick and choose losers, but it's, you know.
Yeah. At what point do you stop handing it out?
Right. Yeah, and what is our role in, you know, deciding whose business or whose commercial, commercial property is successful?
Yes, and even like in the full application we have, where, um, they have to, within fifteen days, notify the appraiser's office that they're completed.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And then, like, the estimated or actual cost of improvements, um, documentation's needed to support. So if it's, you know, a remodel of a kitchen, they at least have to have, like, their contractors.
Yeah, signing off on things. Here's what we've done, here's where we're at, here's, yeah, just that, I mean, you know, construction world, we call it like a, a punch list or a timeline of, you know, to do, like, so everybody stays in contact. I think some of those issues were, it would be radio silence for a long time, and nobody knew if they were still in or if they were approved, if they were.
Well, and some of those were building permits that I called, and I'm like, are you done? And they know that it's, as, it's taxed as it stands January one, so they would say, no, they're not done.
Yeah.
But they're living in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, um, the other thing is that if it's, you know, a remodel, that the appraiser can go inside to, to check.
Sure.
Because we have some that, well, you know, they can't come inside, but you wanna rebate on your interior, interior remodel.
Right. Yeah, if you're gonna invite the government into your, you might as well let them in, yeah.
Yeah.
But in some sense, I would rather it be, you know, if we're two people, I'm gonna go into a home, just like I didn't say, because it's, and just.
Oh, yeah.
For, for the taxpayer. Um, we have one that just brought the floor in, the applications, and you can tell that exactly what it was.
Right, right. There was no question?
Yeah, there's no question of that.
Yeah.
Improvement, um.
But you wanna have the ability to go verify if, if it was in question, yeah. Along those lines, uh, Les had brought it up earlier, talking about some type of, uh, way for the county to verify, you know, the, the good practices were being done, things like that. And that's a little similar to this discussion, but it's, you know, like a code enforcement trigger of some sort, and I, we talked about having a, a general liability sign off or whatever for the, you know, just to kind of pass the, the onus on to whoever was building it or whatever.
We could do the updates with the application.
Saying that this will be up to our.
Yeah.
The best practices and, just so that, you know. It's weird nowadays, but when the county signs off on something or supports something, then somehow everybody wants to blame you. I mean, say, oh, you didn't do this right.
Yeah.
You let them put siding on without sheeting, you know, things like that come up and it's, uh, just trying to cover all of our bases, yeah.
So do we need to have a roll-up date for this? I was thinking October one. I know we have people waiting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that are holding off on construction.
Yeah.
Well, and I have some that have started construction, that, um, it's vacant land, and so I've helped those back. So that way. And so I've held those back, so that way you guys can have said, okay, you know, these parcels that have started construction can go ahead and be in.
Yeah.
Because that way we're not holding up, you know, concrete guy.
Whatever, yeah.
The electrical, and then all of a sudden, everybody's so busy that nothing's getting done, um.
What was your original timeline on that? I can't even remember. Was it October? Is that what we?
We, I think we're shooting September first.
Yeah, September.
Where are we going?
Uh, we're just moving at the speed of government.
October one, we're like, we'll be good. And then we good for just as well, you know, this, I mean.
Have it, like, concrete, yes. Um, but what we need to know is which way do you wanna go? Um, the one application per property.
I like that. Les, do you have any specific concerns on that?
Sorry, say that again. I didn't hear.
So now we're going through the little checklist of what you do want to include. Do you want to include the one application per property?
Do we want to include the what?
One application per parcel.
Oh, yeah.
Um, what about the, the right for, so they waived their rights to protest taxes?
And I thought about that after that was brought up.
Mm-hmm.
And at first, it's like, uh, yeah, I mean, you're in the custody, why would you have the right to protest your taxes? But the other side of that coin, well, you know, if it's someone's right to protest, I don't think the competition will write, but it's your right to protest that we grant. And if you can't protest it, then we don't have the glory of Michelle Brooks, they're doing everything fair and all that. Then do they need to protest? Of course, if their value goes up so much, then that's more of a rebate they get, but you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That's kind of the conversation I'm having in my head about that one. I'm kind of on the case about that one.
Okay, so we, we will leave that out. Um, what about the one transfer limit?
I do like, yes, I do like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll get the no delinquent taxes.
Right.
Okay, so do you want taxes do, like, they can't be delinquent in December or in May, or just by the May tenth?
Uh, well, I think we have a delinquent policy currently, no way to where it's actually considered delinquent.
We do, but we have some that are right now waiting for you guys.
That's what I'm getting at, is that our policy is you're not technically delinquent until the amount in full is due.
May tenth, yes.
So we can make that.
So May tenth.
Right.
Then five or seven?
I find, I mean, I think seven is more beneficial, but it comes along with the next question of the, the tier, the percentages and whatnot.
Okay, so let's move to the, do we want to cap it at three fifty?
Uh.
Or four hundred?
Yeah, I think four hundred, because, and the cost of the house right now is crazy. And I didn't say you could ever save it, you know, in my lifetime, but you can get to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars pretty quick.
Yeah.
And that's a night home, I'm not gonna say not, but I do know a home that's three hundred and two bath, new, on flat, that is in that range.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I would think if we kept it four hundred, it's fair.
Okay, so do we want to do a ninety or eighty percent? If we do ninety percent, it would be a ten percent is held back for the admin fees. If we do eighty percent, five percent is held back for admin fees.
So, along that line, don't we charge an admin fee? I'm trying to say, don't, don't we take an admin fee out when they pay, or out of the rebate now?
That's a flat twenty-five dollars, isn't it?
It's twenty-five dollars currently, and the problem with it is you cannot put it into CIC. CIC will only accept a percentage. So it's costing the county money every time that the treasurer has to go and take that twenty-five dollars out.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to the, uh, well, did you say eighty or ninety?
Well, I mean, a ten percent admin. So ninety, if it's ninety percent rebate, then ten percent of that rebate is held back for admin fees. If it's eighty percent rebate, then five percent is held back. So at the end, they're either getting an eighty or a seventy-five percent realistically.
So I would take the ninety would be, as long as that ten percent, I would take that ten percent would cover our fee.
Yeah. With the ten percent, okay, and then seven years, is that what we decided, seven years? Or, well, no, we went, we skipped it, didn't we?
He skipped that, but earlier, Les, earlier you said you, you, you were not in favor of a five-year plan, is that correct?
Correct.
So seven years or ten?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm calling seven.
Okay.
Are you good with seven?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm just one vote, one person. And we're not voting on it today, we're just saying, here's, we're polishing the draft up here, yeah.
And then, so is it twenty percent or twenty-five percent for an improvement?
For rehab.
Yeah.
I don't know, what's, uh, the problem with that was if you go too low, you're gonna, you're liable to drop out of it, right?
Yes.
Just by what happens?
By default, yeah.
And it would be the same term, trying to shoot for that seven years would be your maximum potential on there? And you're suggesting either twenty or twenty-five?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, the twenty-five would probably fine on that. And like, I don't know, Les, what do you, your, what you, what are you thinking?
Uh, yeah, twenty-five.
What would there, would there be an admin fee on that then, or, and what would that be?
Same as the other.
Shall we say that again? I thought we were doing ten percent as well as admin fee.
No, ten per, ninety percent would be the rebate with the ten percent of an admin fee.
A new, new constru-
Yeah, so they would get ninety percent back, and ten percent of the ninety percent would be held back for admin fee.
Right, and that means we don't have to, why are they getting more?
Exactly.
Okay.
So then for the renovation projects or for the?
Would be the same.
So there'd be a tw- twenty-five rebate?
You have to twenty-five, you have to increase the value twenty-five percent in order to qualify.
Okay, so same rate, same rebate level. I got you, I got you.
Did you get more help?
Yeah. Yeah. I was thinking a completely different, uh, uh, I was thinking of the twenty-five being the rebate back.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
And then we'll put the commercial under the same, so they'll have the same amount.
Four hundred would be your?
For cat long commercial, um.
Well, well, I mean, hold on there, because the commercials, your building could get real high real fast, too.
Okay, great, yeah.
It depends, I think, because commercials so broad, you could be talking about a fifteen hundred square foot, single level store, or you could be talking about a thirty thousand square foot multi-use facility.
Right, four hundred dollars a square foot.
So do you, what do you, do you want to cap commercial? And if you do, what are you thinking of capping it at?
That's what, that's what I'm curious, if I, if we go not necessarily a chat with commercial, but maybe a little different year and tier amount.
So we could do the five-year commercial at eighty percent with the ten percent admin fee.
Yeah, because if they felt, I mean, if they felt a three million dollar commercial built, I mean, 'cause, it, I guess what we're talking about commercial, but is industrial kind of roped in with the, with the commercial, or is industrial even qualified?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we generally wrap it in with the commercial.
Okay, and that's fine. I just, uh, wanted to make sure because again, you know, if we get, if going gets a, uh, Navy plan, for instance, who wants to come in there and that's a ten billion dollar structure, thirty billion dollar structure, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
And I think that if a five-year, you know, at eighty percent, that's a pretty dang good.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good amount.
Now, would you still apply that, you said something earlier about you'd only be eligible for one type of funding, or one, one grand or whatever? I mean, cause a lot of your bigger commercial properties are gonna have subsidies.
Yes, and that's where, um, we basically, if we did that, the MIH homes wouldn't be, they wouldn't be in.
Okay, see, you would scratch that idea, okay, okay.
So, commercial at five years?
Five years, yeah, well, eighty-ten.
Yeah, eighty-ten. Are you good with that rating?
I think so. I'm sure I'll go ask other people their questions after this, but. And we're wanting to have this finalized by October first. And I'm sure Heather will have some input on some of this, too, but.
Right.
I mean, we all wanna have some type of incentives, I mean, but it's.
Sorry, Kay, I didn't catch, so what did we put that cap at for commercial? We, okay, okay, got it.
Trying to think of some of the scenarios that we ran into that were, that were brought up, I mean, how?
Well, in.
Other than the communication issues.
That's where, so in the application paperwork, they'll have, that they have to contact the appraiser's office within fifteen days of completion. They're gonna have to sign the statement that they understand they have to pay the taxes. Um, they will have to at least submit, um, the final bill from the contractor. So that way, you know, okay, you really did spend this much. Um, if it's, you know, if it's an owner contractor, then they're gonna have to bring receipts in, you know?
Right, and there's gotta be some type of understanding, like, you've applied, but you're not in the program until the completion.
And then till the completion.
And then everybody signs off on it, saying it's done, and you're in, and here you go. That way, if they sell the property or what have you, then it can, oh, yeah, it's in for sure, here's the signature.
Yes.
And by the, well, by the way, here's the stipulation, make sure your taxes are paid and all that.
And they sign on that for air on our part, and then for them to not be able to just keep coming.
Yeah.
You guys insane, well, this is, they are, they're signing, they understand and being.
I mean, five or seven years down the road, you really, I mean, it's somebody come in here and say, well, I thought this was, you know,
Yeah.
I just wanna eliminate that the best we can.
Well, and that's the other thing, and like, I'll, like, there's even wording in there, it's not just the taxes they have to have, like, if it's in the county, they have to have the appropriate permits.
Sure.
If it's in the city, they have to have the appropriate permits, and, and what we've done is if it's in the city, they have to bring us a copy of that permit.
Sure, that's great. Why not, yeah. I mean, if you were new construction, you had to put in some type of sewer system, septic or whatever, you know, or lagoon, why would you not have, I mean, that's gonna be on record, so why wouldn't you have any other permitting on record?
All right, so we're good?
I think so, until we come up with something else to ask you about.
One, one thing I was just going, on the commercial side, then one thing I might suggest, just say, hey, we'll put a cap at a million, or whatever number you wanna say, all applications above a million shall be brought forth the cap issue. That way you can really, mainly you can really look at the specifics of the projects, and you're, you're not, if somebody picks it up and they're thinking about doing a big thing here, they're not like, oh, it's, I'm not gonna be in it for this, they just need to know, hey.
Well, and John Q. Public might turn his nose up on something like a big project like that, and be like, you mean we're, you know, we're subsidizing that as a county, too? They're already getting whatever else. I mean, there might be, yeah.
Did you hear that?
You can, you're not closing the door, you're not boxing yourself in.
Right.
But you're also not, you know.
That's not a bad idea. Les, did you hear that little extra discussion there?
Yeah, I did, yeah. Yeah, take that one definitely, the whole commercial industrial needs that little more, uh, research and conversation.
Yeah.
Because then, like we talked before, you know, we've always kind of wanted that, the, the residential and then that commercial industrial be itself, you know, be separate and have, you know, some different, different type of regulation. You don't wanna rope them both dead, because those projects typically could be multi-year projects, you know, I don't know how can do, but.
Well, and so far, I mean, so far, all the commercial ones that we've had are local mom and pop type businesses, just doing an improvement. They're not building a brand new facility.
Large warehouse or product, yeah, so.
Right, so we are trying to predict the future.
Right, well, you wanna, you wanna allow for development, I mean, you wanna allow for, you wanna be flexible enough that you can, uh,
Right.
Move on the fly, instead of rewrite the book every time something new comes up.
All right.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for sticking around back there, too.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, we're, we're running out of bullet points on the agenda here, Les. Uh, looks like we got? Uh, Michelle Moore's personnel change tax rule corrections? I can't see. I got an eye appointment tomorrow.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah, I've looked on Amazon, you can't pick them up on Amazon yet, so.
Gotta get them readers, five, ten.
I'm a s- I'm half scared they're gonna tell me that I need them bifocals and stuff. I remember making, I remember making fun of my dad, giving him a hard time when that came around.
Yeah, that's why, if you heard it.
So, yeah, this one makes total sense on the, uh, tax rule correction, uh.
Yeah, I saw that, too, I liked that.
Okay, I move to approve the tax rule correction.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All sign it. Quirks payroll change here. I think, Les, you had talked about some of this already with, with Michelle, hadn't you? I think so. So, uh.
Uh, yeah, sorry, I got confused. Yes, I spoke with, that's the one payroll change, correct?
That is correct. I would, I, I move to approve the personnel payroll action form as presented.
I'm sorry, can I?
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle.
That was for the workers.
Okay, and here's one, uh, payroll, uh, personnel payroll action form from the, uh, treasurer's office.
I haven't seen that one yet, but I'm gonna press your judgment.
Yeah.
Follow your lead.
Yeah, yeah, appears to be a, a new, new hire here.
Good.
What's that? Yeah, new hire, uh, and I don't think this is through that key staffing either, I think this is just, uh, through us. Michelle thought she sent it to you, but.
I did not.
She may have.
Oh, she said, she, now she retracts that, says she did not, she overlooked it.
There you go.
Yeah, I don't see anything.
The state government, that's crazy.
I, I don't see anything wrong with this one, uh, Les, and, uh.
Okay.
I would move to approve the payroll action form as presented by the treasurer.
No, seconded then.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You can yell at me later if you don't like it. Michelle, looks like we're getting down to the nitty-gritty stuff here, is that, I'm not forgetting anything, am I? Okay. Let's see, would, would you rather do first the payroll or the bills, or it doesn't matter to you?
No.
All right, Les, I trust you've seen those papers?
I have.
Okay. And I think on the payroll, uh, if I'm reading this accurately, it looked like the dollar amount was. Yeah, like, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Does that sound, sound right? Okay. Would you like to make a motion on that, or would you like me to?
So moved.
The motion is made to pay the ro, the payroll on that, uh, approve the payroll on that dollar amount. Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. What's today's date?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
I think we might have to change the date on that, is it? It's all right, you want me to sign this still, or you want to wait?
Just exit.
Okay, excellent. What did you say today, is it sixteenth? My daughter's birthday. Okay, there's a big roll. Now, the approval of bills, did you have any issue or any questions on any of that, Les?
I don't.
Okay, and I think the total of all those funds, is that the three hundred and five that there, okay.
Well, the blue sticky note has all of those, unless you're gonna separate.
Here? I got you. That blue sticky note.
No, this is the one we need to sign for.
Yeah, yeah, not this one.
Um, but it's the total of this one, this one, this one.
Oh, mercy, okay. I didn't know how much work was down on this side of the table.
I know. Absolutely, yes.
Yeah. Okay, but the total for all those ends up being that, okay, you ready for this, Les?
Yes, sir.
All right. I move to pay the bills in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Well, thank you, Ted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Michelle gave me about seventeen hundred pieces of paper to sign here.
I'm getting crammed.
I know it, lucky if I make it out of here without a paper cut. Uh, Michelle, is that the end of the official action that needs to be taken today that you're aware of?
I don't think so, I think we had everything else done.
Les, did you have anything that we needed to add today?
I did not.
You might remind everybody that it's, next week's meeting is at six P.M.
Okay, yeah, uh, Michelle asked to remind everybody that the next week's meeting will be at six P.M. on the, what is that, twenty? Twenty-third?
Twenty-third, it's sure.
There will be no snacks provided unless you bring some.
Oh, man, we're gonna take that.
All right, well, for lack of anything else to do, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I reluctantly second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.